The City and Marine City Commission Meeting is called to order on Thursday, November 17, 2022 at 7:00 PM. We start by having a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support. And now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Bryson?
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Here.
Commissioner Hillfrank?
Here.
Commissioner Clausen?
Here.
Commissioner Rorig?
Here.
Commissioner Ross?
Here.
Mayor Vandembosh?
Here.
City Manager Chapman?
Here.
And just before we proceed with the agenda, I'd like to welcome the commissioners and the public to this commission meeting before us. I've asked the city attorney to prepare a couple of public presentations. The first one is on Open Meetings Act, and that will be on December 15. The second one will be on the Freedom of Information Act, that will be on January 19, 2023. Encourage the public to be present for these presentations, and we will allow questions by members of the public. Presentations will be for the beginning of our meetings. A couple of things I'd like to say is the purpose of our meetings of the City Commission is to carry out the business of the city pursuant to the published and supported agenda. Good government is transparent and facilitates agreements and disagreements. Better government is transparent and handles agreements and disagreements, both professionally and respectfully. And my goal, and I believe it's the goal of this entire commission, is that we have better government. And with that said, let's move forward with discussion on our proposed agenda. Next item is to approve the agenda before us. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Reports.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you have a question?
Uh, no, we're good.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carried. All right, and public comment? Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and limit comments to five minutes. Commission will not respond, but we will be following up as necessary.
Hope luck, Jack. I just want to take a second to congratulate Commissioners Rorig, Commissioners Hillfrank, and Mayor Vandembosh on being newly elected to the City Commission. And I want to thank the City Commission as a whole for postponing my issue yesterday to tonight's agenda. Thank you once again for that.
Hello, John Sapienza, 126 Jefferson Street. I've been here for about 25 years doing business. I want to say, first of all, what a great town this is and how much I love this town. A lot of things, though, a lot of things I'm not happy with over the years. I call it corruption. You may not, but I'm confident this new board here is going to see to it. The corruption that I want to talk about, I don't really want to specifically go through the corruption over all the years. I want to, I'd rather do that in closed session. But this here is one example, small example, of corruption in this town, right here. And the people that are responsible for this are more corrupt than anything this gentleman up here has done. I can guarantee you that. Now, I want to tell you a little story about the founder of this town. This is one thing that makes me so proud to be here in Marine City. Founder of this town is Samuel Ward. He built a schooner, he sailed up the Great Lakes, came from Canada. He saw this little area here, and he thought this would be a great town to start a business and build boats. He built a sailing vessel that could haul freight, sort of like the first precursor to the freighters. And he built a business with him and Eber Ward that was so great that it, they were responsible for bringing the ore up north and bringing it down. They're responsible for starting the steel industry. Eber Ward bought the patents from France when they discovered the best way to make steel, started making steel. Eber and Samuel, Samuel Ward was the first millionaire in the Northwest Territory. Eber Ward was the first millionaire in Detroit. They built the shipping industry and the steel industry that was responsible for winning not only World War I and World War II, the industry, but also for winning the Civil War. Those great men came from this town. And the thing is, the most great thing, the best thing that they ever did was they helped slaves, runaway slaves, get over to Canada. This is why we need to build a statue of Samuel and Eber Ward in this town. They were listed in the Underground Railroad for helping to escape slaves, get over to Canada. They put their whole industry at risk to do the right thing. These two great men from Marine City, it wasn't called Marine City, it should be called Ward. This town should be named after the Wards, really. So, the United States had a policy that you're supposed to repatriate slaves back to the South. Samuel Ward and Ebers Ward did this. They said, "F you, we're going to, we're going to keep helping slaves get across and get out." And so because of that, there was a bounty put on their heads. They risked their whole industry to do the right thing. It's an amazing thing what these two great people did in this town and what they did for our country, just an amazing thing. I'm so great and so thankful to be from this wonderful town that's done so many great things. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Hello, my name's Robert Harmon. I formerly lived at 610 Bruce Street in Marine, well. Reason I'm here tonight is my house was broken into in 2017, and I was told that it was a civil infraction, even though I had pictures of the people that broke into the house with a truck and trailer loading it. And here recently, I moved out of town, a company took over the property, and the property behind it, adjacent to it, is still my mother's, and I had a camp trailer on it locked up with a padlock. And they cut, the people that cleaned out the house, cut the lock and took items out of the trailer. And again, I was told it was a civil infraction and nothing they could do. What I'm here to find out is if that is true or if they even gave it to the prosecuting attorney and let him make the decision, if it was something that could be done. As of now, I've been out, they cleaned my house out once, and now they're, they cleaned out a lot of stuff out of my trailer. And it's always been a civil infraction, and they haven't done anything. So I don't know what to do now. It's to the point where I'm just out of whatever they took. So I'm out, this last batch was $14,000. The first batch was about, probably about $20,000 at least. They stole riding lawnmower, hunting stuff, guns, fish and tackle, fish and tackle boxes, the whole shebang, tools. So I don't know what to do with them anymore. Marine City don't want to do anything, so I don't know how to proceed with this. If I get some kind of response, I'd like to find out, and the statute of limitations for the first one is about to run out, from what I understand, it's six years. That was done about five and a half years ago, it was done in March. So this March will be the six years that you cannot legally go after anybody. I gave them the pictures of the first one, and they keep telling me it's a civil infraction. Who do you sue? You can't find the people that did it. And this one, they even got a company that went in through it, and I can't get, they lied to, apparently to the police department, so there's nobody held responsible. So if you could please give me some kind of answer, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, any votes? Joe?
You'll get used to that gavel, it takes a little wrist action. In reference to Item 10B on the agenda today, the appointment of the Community and Economic Development Board City Commission Representative. As a result of our recent elections, Cheryl Verkaman, the former mayor, is no longer the City Commission's representative to the CED Board. And as you and I have already discussed, the Commission's representative to that board should be the mayor. The CED Board members agree, and I hope you and the other members of the Commission tonight will, excuse me, will agree and establish a tradition. On another topic, I have some election results, Mayor, Mayor, one of the, Mayor, Mayor, Madam Mayor. One of the city's new commissioners, commissioners is quoted in the Times Herald as claiming he was elected by, and I quote, "a true majority of Marine City." This commissioner is well-known for claiming he represents the people of Marine City. It's also well-known that his statistics skills leave something to be desired. According to the city clerk's website from St. Clair, the county, Marine City had 2,932 registered voters, of whom 1,814 voted, which is a 61.87% voter rate, which is higher than the state as a whole. So Marine City should be congratulated as far as that goes. The commissioner in question received 816 votes, which was 44% of the votes cast, but only 27% of the registered voters. And if you consider our population is somewhere in the neighborhood of 4,000, that's only about 20% of the city, hardly the majority of Marine City voters. I for one, and I know many more of the over 3,000 residents that did not vote, this continued claim rankles. I object to it, and I wish you'd speak to them about it. He just looks foolish making it over and over again. So regardless of who voted for whom, we have a group of seven individuals now who, as a body, do represent the city of Marine City. All of the people, not just those who voted for them or who voted, period. You, as a body, not only represent the people, you are stewards of the city itself and charged to leave it in a better condition than what you found it in. The city's in pretty good shape right now, so you have, your work cut out for you. Your faces are the face of Marine City. Your actions and your words contribute greatly to how Marine City is perceived and create waves that impact us all. You must, as a body, get rid of the rhetoric, get rid of the filibustering, and get together as a group and govern. You must be statesmen and women. Davy Crockett, at least the Disney version, spoke words that have guided me through my whole life. Always be sure you're right, and then go ahead. I can think of no finer advice to give you at the start of this new commission session.
Anybody else like to speak? Rudy?
My comments are just going to be brief. First of all, I want to congratulate you, Madam Mayor, new commissioners. I think it's clear, regardless of what's already been said, the community has spoken, and you're, are representatives. And I'm sure you've, people have already approached you and stuff on a wish list. One of the things that, as I walk around, I talk to folks that they'd like to see is City Hall to be reopened to five days, like Chief Hissleb did in his department. You know, that's kind of resounding kind of thing that I hear. If there is a way, and I know this is difficult, but it's got to change during the public comments. I know, and I heard you, I go to Port Huron School District, I go to Marysville School District, I go to different boards, and they're all the same, but if you think about it for just a minute, for those of you out there, you're asking for a vote, you're asking for something from the folks, and those folks are your supervisors, and they elect you. And then you sit here on that day of your new day you're hiring, and you say, "I can't talk to you. I'm not going to answer you." I think if you could work out some kind of system or something where the folks that could, like this gentleman here, he's looking for some relief. You are his representative. I think it's incumbent about somebody up here to say, "Hey, listen, I'm going to let you talk to the chief, I'm going to let you talk to Mike." I think I shared that with you, Jen, one time when I was at a meeting in Detroit, and I saw that mayor, he came into southwest Detroit, and the people came out just like this. And he said, "What? Okay. Housing, whose housing?" Got his manager, right away, talked to the gentleman. Somebody have problems with police? Where's my police chief? Take care of this man." And that's what made, makes that mayor, I think, quite successful. I mean, that's just something that you might want to think about, Madam Mayor. And again, I thank you, I congratulate you, and anybody who gets up here. I appreciate you.
Anybody else? Oh.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Verkaman, and I'm the retired mayor. Public comment at the beginning of City Commission meetings should be related to agenda items. Some have veered way off that path. The public viewing, the public that views the meetings from home do not see the audience and who comes and goes. At the last City Commission meeting during a break, someone who spoke at the public comment section was followed outside to their car and was verbally attacked by another person. The police chief had to get involved, and everything was settled outside. Ladies and gentlemen, this should never be allowed to happen. We should not be fearful of retaliation by anyone, especially someone sitting in the audience, because we comment at a city meeting. This should not be tolerated, and I feel that if anyone does such a thing, they should be banned from future city meetings. Before you, we have two resolutions for two different Spark Grants to revitalize two different parks. One park is on the corner of Washington and Main and is a wonderful walk-up park that has some very old equipment. I have taken my grandkids there many times, and I can attest that the play equipment has seen better days. Getting a grant for all new, modern, and safe equipment for our residents is a good thing and encourages outside play and socialization for our kids, which is so very important. The second resolution is for another Spark Grant for beach area renovations, which is also badly needed. A second modern bathroom and equipment would be a very nice addition at our city beach. Spark Grants require $0 from the city, and I hope the Commission does something nice for the city and residents and approves these two Spark Grants. Thank you.
Let me up this thing?
Hello, my name's Dave Vandembosh, County Commissioner for District 7, and I guess I'm Mr., the first man of the county, or the city now. We've switched roles. Six years ago today, I was sworn in as mayor by Chris Baxter, and it's apropos that Jen's taken over, and I think you'll do a great job, I really do. I have a lot of faith in you, and I think you'll put a great face on this city. And I don't know if anybody really knows a lot of Jen's background, but she's very diverse, I give her that. She's moved around through the county at different positions, she's worked for two different sheriffs, she's worked for the prosecuting attorney, now in the court system, and she's dealt with a lot of attorneys. She's got a background, so watch it, Bob. And I think, I think you've got the wherewithal and the common sense to do this project. She's also our first retired female firefighter. She put 15 years, 20 years? 20. They're all blending together now since, and she goes, "I just hope you're not around to see her name on the wall." She's like, "I don't know." But she's done a great job, and she's dealt with the city in the background for all of those 20 years. And I think her experience of working on both sides of the desk, I think, will actually prevail. And congratulations to all the new commissioners and reelection from Mr. Bryson and the rest of you. Good luck, and I know some days it's, we're here with pitchforks and torches. Hopefully, we can get out of that and get into some little better arrangements. So congratulations and good luck.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Ross, I live on South Parker. And I just want to say, I meant to send a letter out to the Commission, I guess it was two meetings ago, when Holly and Michelle were presenting, or when Holly presented on the grant money through the foundation, through the Wilson Foundation. And, and the fact that, through the work that they did, would enable us to get potentially up to $400,000, just with nothing we have to submit at all, nothing we have to pay for, and yet there was still some opposition. Honestly, as a resident of the town, when I heard that kind of money being, just free money to be given to us, that we could even apply for, the fact that there would be any question, or at least, there should at least be some gratitude for the, I was just rather shocked and disappointed at the response, because I, to me, I thought it was just awesome that things that we could do to improve our community for everybody that lives here, whether it's in the parks, or whether it's the boat launch, or whatever we're going to be doing. And so I guess my only statement was, congratulations to everybody who wanted, is now on the Commission, but it's just to try to keep an open mind, to consider across. There are a lot of opportunities where, I know there's a lot of talk about, well, money could go to the streets, and money could go here, but sometimes the money does, it's not tax money, there's, they're just grant money that's out there for us to take, and if it doesn't go to our town, it goes to somebody else. And I love our town, as you guys all do. So I just, as we try to be open-minded as, as things go forward, to really think about in the big picture what this can mean for, for our town as we, as we move forward. And again, congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, moving on in the agenda, the approving of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of October 20, 2022?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
It was so moved.
Okay. All right. Sorry.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have the Marine City Fire Authority Run Report, Departmental Activity Reports, 300 Broadway Committee Meeting Minutes from September 26, 2022, Planning Commission Minutes from October 10, 2022, Community Economic Development Board Minutes, September 28, 22, Historical Commission Minutes, July 19, 22, Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes, July 19, Pension Board Minutes from July 26, and the Retiree Healthcare Minutes from July 26, 2022. And can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Items A through I.
Support.
Okay, having a motion and support. All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Hillfrank?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Rorig?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vandembosh?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving on to financial business. We have expenditures, including payroll, for $378,172.31. Can I have a motion for the expenditures, including payroll, in that amount, $378,172.31?
I'll make a motion, we approve the expenditures, including payroll, for $378,172.31.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Wait, can we discuss?
Oh, if you'd like to discuss.
Yeah. Mike, the filter bed paint? We'd approved that you could do more than one. Was that just for the one, or did you end up?
Just for the one.
Okay, that was what was needed, and then, but you still have reserves left to do another, should you be able to shut it down? Okay, good. And that went well. And then your boom lift?
Yes.
Right, but I mean, it's good?
Yep.
You think that'll serve you, and, okay.
No, it's quite often.
Okay, great. That was all I had for that.
Thank you.
I got a question for the City Manager. I noticed in the expenditures that you have the UHY invoice cost in there. Is there a reason why those weren't given to the Commission, the actual invoices in the packets?
The UHY did get every bill when we got them.
I'm sorry, the Commission?
The Commission, or sorry, the Commission did get a copy of the invoice when we had them.
Okay.
Monthly since we've had them, so.
Were they removed from?
No.
The online packets?
No.
No? Because I searched through every one of them, and I believe Commissioner Hendrick did as well, and they weren't in there.
They shouldn't, they should be.
I mean, there was nothing intentional, was, we've got them, they came to you guys. I know there were some off months because they weren't timely all the time, so they weren't always consistent at the same time that we got them, but no, they've all been, they're all public knowledge, so.
So each, each month? Each month, they were in the packet, as far as your knowledge?
If we received it from UHY. There may be a couple of months where we didn't get it timely, so it pushed back to the, a different month.
Okay.
But yeah, we've, you guys, they've all come through this board, every single one of them.
Because I know they started in, what was it, December of 2021? And I don't think a single invoice made it to the packets until April, which is not, you know, that's not really acceptable, as we're trying to evaluate these decisions and these costs. We need to know how much.
Every invoice for permission to pay has come through this board, every one. If for some reason it's not in the online packet, I cannot speak to that. They have all been at this board.
They've been at the board, but I double-checked, they're not all in the packets.
I don't have control over that, so.
Oh, so.
We can see why, I don't know why, but we can see why.
You don't, who does have control? Because we got to figure that out, obviously.
So I can check with the clerk and see at what point or why it wasn't, I don't, I don't know.
Everyone that's been handed to me comes through, and it's usually included as part of the consent agenda under the activity reports. So as soon as, by the time that I've been getting them, they've been.
That's what I thought also, but I looked also just to verify, and they're not all there.
Yeah, I mean, they're not all necessarily monthly, because sometimes I know they double up.
No, we checked through the whole year.
But.
We, we've looked through every single agenda online for, from December up until they quit, and I believe. up until they quit, and I believe September, October. And the only ones that were there was in April, that there was three months in, in one packet. Other than that, they, they weren't there. So, no, I don't, obviously, I wasn't on this commission, so I can't speak to maybe what was in the packets that were given to the commission. Commissioner Hendrick says they weren't.
Well, some of them might have been given at a meeting, but they're, I'm just saying, they're not in the online packets.
Okay. Just, just going forward, just for, for the public's knowledge of, of these things. I mean, these, these bills were, you know, 16,000, 20,000, eight, nine, 10,000 a month. And these things are very important for, for the public. You know, they, they want to see where their money's being spent, and what it's being spent on. And it's important to have that stuff, not, not just for us, but going forward in the future, for future agendas and future people's knowledge. And when they're looking at these things, and, and the mistakes that happen with that, and trying to prevent those mistakes. So, it's all got to be on public record. If we don't know the mistakes that we made, it's hard not to repeat those mistakes. So, can we make sure that, you know, those, those invoices, especially invoices that are for such a large dollar amount, are, are in the packets?
As I said, anything that's been given to me has been scanned and provided. So, if there's anything that's missing, it wasn't provided to me to scan to the packet. So, I can...
So, who provides them to you?
They came through...
If I have them, I give them to the clerk.
Yeah. They've been provided.
We will take a look at it.
I can go back through and review everything. And I, whatever I find, I can let you know, but...
No, no, we got them. I got them now, because she, I had to email the, the City Manager, and she sent them all. So, that's not the issue.
But I can review the packet.
The issue for me now is like, can we get those invoices back into the public record? So, people, like I said, they can be reviewed by people in the future and, and actually put into the agenda packets that are online?
So, you want me to go back through and pull all the agenda packets and make sure, and then include a...
That, that would be, that'd be nice. I mean, they, they, it's just, see, this is the thing. Like, we're, we're trying to set a precedent going forward, right? So, we should probably fix what we did before.
So, what if we were to scan the UHY packet, throw this out there, and just put the packet itself of all UHY bills under the public notice section?
That, that would be great. Just as long as it's something there for people to look back at in the future. That's all I'm worried about. And then, going forward, especially with, with invoices that are so much, such a high dollar amount, we really got to have those in the packets. We got to have them.
Yeah. And Jen, like I said, if they were given to me, I scanned them. If they weren't, if I did not receive them, then they were not scanned. So, I can't speak to why they wouldn't be. But I will get the packet that was sent to you guys by email, by Holly, and I will make sure it's put under public notice.
So, when you say you don't know why they weren't scanned, that's, that's concerning to me.
No, I didn't say I don't know why they weren't scanned. I said, if they were given to me, they were scanned.
Okay. So, you didn't know why they weren't given to you?
I have, I have no control over what somebody else gives me. If they hand it to me, and they tell me it goes in the commission packet, it goes in the packet.
And who's this, who is somebody else? That would be the City Manager, correct?
If she gave them to me, or if UHY provided them, then...
If I received it from UHY, I gave it to Shannon to put in the packet.
Okay.
That's how it works.
Right. I mean, honestly, how it should work is, when we're spending so much money every month, we're going to, we should be making sure we have those invoices. That's really how it should work.
And they didn't always do as detailed of invoices as were the, the last ones. Because at some point, this commission asked for, or the previous commission, asked for more detail. So, they may have been included and not as detailed. So, the ones that you saw from April on were the ones that they provided that were more detailed. Before that, they may have looked different. So, again, I can go back through the packets and look and see what's in there. And I can give you page numbers of whatever's on there.
Appreciate that. Just looking through line by line of, of every one of those invoices, like I did, the detail's all the same. It really is. Like, everything is the same in there. It's all broken down, each hour, what they did, what they didn't do, you know?
I'm just saying, they were different before April. I think that's when they, or there was an ask at this commission in one of the meetings, either April or May, for them to call out more detail. So, they may have looked different. They may have been a single line item of, this is the dollar amount.
No, that's what I'm saying. They, they weren't. They were all the same. They were all the same in detail, breakdown, hour by hour.
Right, April on. I mean, before that. The ones that you...
Before that, too. They're all the same. They were all the same. But as long as, you know, like I said, as long as they're being put back, you know, for the public and, and moving forward, we have those in the packets each month. That's all I'm worried about. Thank you.
Yep. I'll put them under public notices.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Hey, any other discussion? Okay. You have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Hillfrank?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Rorick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vannebosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Item 8B, the preliminary financial statements. I get a motion to receive and file the preliminary financial statements.
So moved.
Support.
Hey, any discussion?
I just have one comment. And this is on the revenue and expenditure, which probably should have been listed on the agenda. In the revenue and expenditure report on page nine... The only concern I have is that I'm looking at the total revenues and expenditures, and we've got a deficit of $782,000 in the general fund. So, and I, I just see some of these figures are a little off. So, and I know we got a sheet from the auditor that basically is telling us a lot of these figures aren't correct. And I, I think he's, he's probably got something. But that's very concerning to see that kind of number on there for that. You see it at the bottom? It's in the available balance, the abnormal column.
On page nine?
Yep. Nine of 28.
Nine of the revenue expenditure.
Twenty-eight.
At which, I'm sorry, I don't...
It's the...
The last line.
Available balance, right before the percentages.
Oh, okay. I don't know what you want me to say about it.
Well, I guess...
There, I mean, these are rolling numbers. These are rolling budgets. We're in the middle of an audit. There is a lot of adjusting journal entries that are happening. There's a lot of tax collection that had just happened. So, there's been a lot of money in and out. So, I can't speak to this specifically because I'm not sure, on this day, what transpired to make that number exactly that. But, I mean, as we, as I sit down with the treasurer, as she wraps things up with McBride and Manley, and we start working on the amendments for December, I'll have a better insight, and the numbers will be firmed up better, so.
Okay. So, because like, there's an example on the very first page, refus. Normally, we should have collected something, and it's not really showing that we collected anything yet. But, all right, just, it was just an observation.
It may not have come in. It may not all be in yet, so.
Part of it comes in with the tax checks.
Right. A portion.
All right. That's it.
Any other discussion?
On, I mean, there were a few UHY, well, let me just put it this way. On a lot of the, you know, contracted services ones, you know, there, there were some overages. And I know UHY is trying to finish things up and get things handed over to our new treasurer, who I know doesn't have an easy job. And I wish her the best and continue with it and really want her to stay. But I think that that's probably partially to blame for some of those services, some of those overages, rather, you know, looking at the, which I love that column, the budget used percentage. It's very handy. Anyway, like, just one example was page... I'll actually write on page one, I think there was one for contracted services. Oh, there was a court fines one on page one that was 221%. I mean, it wasn't a ton, but just curious if that was anything...
Which one?
The page one, court fines?
Well, that's revenue, so...
Oh, okay. Gotcha. So, that's...
Being over on your revenue percentage is never a bad thing.
Sure. Sure.
Those are the funds that come back from the, we talked about it once. We, we get money back from the court system through the prosecution process.
I got you. So, that was an anticipated revenue rather than expenditure. And then, on the retiree healthcare, they tended to be over on most pages, the OPEB. Is that a similar situation? Or is that just healthcare's going up, or...
That's one of the things we're working with Nihart and McBride on, just to make sure that all of those factors are accurate. Because there has been cost changes. And so, we just, you know, I don't know if things were overinflated, underinflated. When we created this year's budget, we went, you know, your standard is to kind of look at the previous years. So, were we under, have, what has changed? So, that is part of the Nihart gig right now.
Again, it's, it's not crazy. If it's 150 bucks, right? You know, or, sorry, we're over by $265. You know, it's not crazy. But it just, I just wanted to make sure that we were accounting for that in future budgets.
Yes.
And actually, second one from the bottom is a contractual services one, where we're at 511% for that. But again, I know, hopefully, we will be done with UHY soon and can, you know, get on to our well-trained...
They were done at the end of September. They had them out by October 1.
Perfect. And I did call Curtis in relation to, you know, the audit and everything else. And, you know, he was actually very praiseful of the new treasurer and said that, you know, we really need to keep her around and that he thinks things will be much, much better once she's full-time. And did mention that UHY, you know, maybe wasn't quite there in certain aspects. But anyway, was very praiseful, again, of the new treasurer, so. I'm hoping these types of things will be things of the past. That's all.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried.
Okay, moving on to number nine, unfinished business. We have the 172 Bruce Street update with the attorney memo. And can I have a motion to receive and file the updated related to 172 Bruce Street and the related attorney memo?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Moved and support. Now, any discussion?
The, Madam Mayor, may I speak for one second?
Oh.
The board requested that legal action be taken on 172 Bruce Street. And we hit a pause button at the last meeting where I said I would come back to the community with some research on whether that was the proper course of action, given the history. I then went through the minutes and, and produced this history for you so that you would have not only the history of this site, but that you would have an understanding of this process in total going forward. In other words, the dangerous building board process. This is a situation where this, this site went to the dangerous building process. So, that's a selected remedy. It could have went right to court. We, we elected locally to, to exercise a local administrative remedy through the dangerous building ordinance procedure. And then, it got to a point where I think the dangerous building ordinance board convened and, and took action, but, but did not necessarily complete the action that's laid out on page five in my conclusions. So, what I was setting forth in this memo on page five is a series of steps that I think the community needs to do with respect to this property. And fortunately or unfortunately, it requires returning this matter to the dangerous building board and following the list of steps that I put forth on page five of this memo. There's a, there's a circuit court legal principle that if an available administrative remedy has not been exhausted at the local level, you're premature to come to the circuit court looking for relief. So, I, I want to tell you, filing in the circuit court, if this person, you know, obtains competent legal counsel, they're going to raise that issue, and you're going to have spent money going to the circuit court, and you're going to be back to the dangerous board process as, as an unfinished administrative remedy. So, and, and along with the receiving and file, I know you've all read this, I would ask that you authorize the actions listed on page five to be commenced, and, and then we'll get those commenced.
You want to include page six?
Yes. You guys double-site. How do you guys do that?
And pages five and six.
Pages five and six. But just, just so, just so, you know, I, I, there's a little extra time on this so that future questions on the dangerous building process, for all of you, you know, you can go back to this memo and its attachments, and you can always be reminded of what that process entails and how it works.
So, right now, we have the motion and support to receive and file. Shall we continue with that and then do a secondary motion to authorize the action?
That would be totally acceptable.
Okay. All right. So, the first, the motion to receive and file. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
I'll make a motion to also ask that the Dangerous Building Board of Appeals follow pages five and six of item 9A, Bob's recommendation to our City Commission.
Support.
Can I make a comment real quick? We had also had another property address that this would be applicable to. Can we include that address as well in the motion? Besides just the 172 Bruce, we had 135 North Sixth.
Be a separate motion. And I, I don't, since that's not on the agenda, and that property owner, if it was on the agenda, might have wanted to be here, I would suggest we do that in December.
In December. All right.
I leave my motion as it's.
So, we have a motion and we have a support. Any discussion?
Have you gone, does the Dangerous Building Board already have this, or?
No, not yet. They were waiting for your approval to start the process.
They meet, they meet next in January.
Yeah.
Roll call vote?
Commissioner Hillfrank?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Rorick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vannebosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Onto item 9B, the appeal regarding denial of Freedom of Information Act request.
Madam, Madam Mayor, could I just give an introduction to the public, please?
Okay.
So, under the Michigan Freedom of Information Act, the, anyone aggrieved by a decision made by the community with respect to a FOIA request, the statute allows for an appeal process to the head of the body, which is this body in this case, or it allows you to go directly to circuit court and challenge the actions. I, I, in preparation for this evening, Phil, could you walk over here? I, in preparation for this evening, Phil, could you walk over here? And I made a copy of part of the statute for everybody that defines what is a public record, because that'll be relevant to your review. If you have other questions, feel free to ask them, but this is a chance for Phil to raise his appeal. It's a time for you to analyze the appeal. It's a time for you to hear from your FOIA coordinator, my one chart, with respect to the appeal. And then it's a time, as the head of the public body, for you to do one of three things. You grant the appeal, deny the appeal, or order something in the middle. But that's up to you. So, Phil, apologize for that lengthy opening, but you are free, I guess, to proceed with your appeal.
That's okay. I had one question before I begin. Being that it deals with an employee, should I just say election inspector, or can I use the employee's name? I've obtained permission to use the employee's name, but what's the proper protocol when dealing this with that?
The protocol is for you to express, I think, in reviewing your appeal, I don't want to be your...
That's fine. I just...
But I think what you're looking for is you requested a certain public record and you believe you did not get it.
Yeah.
And so, I think you focus on what public record you requested and why you think you should have received it. The clerk would then respond with why the document wasn't produced, and the board will listen to both.
Okay. So, I'll give a little back history, just bring the public up to speed without opinions or anything else in there. Back in July, the city separated services with an election inspector. They've been inspected for 19 years. I heard about it through the community. I got curious as to why. It was an unusual protocol. I hadn't really seen that in the city, so I started looking into it. I FOIA'd the election inspector's file. I obtained the file. Within the file was various things, certifications, certifications of passing the tests, various other employee documents that were public record. But within that, there was two letters that showed up in there. And I'm going to go back to these letters here. I'm getting them right now. You should have them in your packet as well. One letter was, was directly to the election inspector. It was dated July 25, 2022. And it says, "First and foremost, I want to thank you for your service to Marine City as an election inspector. It is, as an election inspector and precinct chairperson. It is my duty and responsibility to protect the integrity of elections of the city Marine City, and I have grave concerns about you continuing to work for the city as an election inspector. While I fully respect your right to any opinions that may hold in light of reasons and circumstances, how you comported yourself publicly at the commission meeting on 7/21/2022 and postings I have come to be aware of on social media," and that's a key point right there, I want to highlight, that's social media, "this behavior is not indicative of impartiality required of a successful election inspector. Therefore, your services will not be needed for the August 2, 2022 election or any forthcoming election. For your reference, I have enclosed directions which provided by the Michigan Bureau of Elections related to my authority to dismiss you from this position." Now, the second letter that showed up was from the clerk to the commission regarding the issue. It says, "As you know, it's my responsibility to maintain the integrity of elections due to the current climate surrounding election process. It is absolutely imperative to me that my office and those who are employed to work the elections inspectors and precinct chairpeople present an image of fairness and impartiality. Everyone is entitled to their thoughts and opinions on any given subject, and I would never presume to tell another person what they should and should not think about, say, think, say, or do. However, when it comes to individuals who are tasked with working for the city as election inspectors, I can and I will always require them to comport themselves with a certain level of dignity and respect during all circumstances that bring them into contact with city commission candidates and office personnel, including during the election process and city meetings. Upon being hired by the city in the role of city clerk, I was informed that there had been discussions about not continuing to call this election inspector to work future elections. However, the decision was made to allow them to work the May election immediately preceding the May election. There were further discussions related to dismissing the election inspector due to concerning posts made on Facebook." And I'm going to highlight the Facebook portion right there. The reason I'm continuing with the whole letter is just for public knowledge as to where I'm extracting this information from and not leaving anything out. Directed towards city employees. Being my first election with the city, I opted to give this election inspector a chance and allowed them to work the May election. Since that time, negative and slanted Facebook posts by the election inspector continued during the week leading up to then cumulating with their behavior at the city commission meeting of July 21, 2022. That left me with grave concerns related to the election inspector's ability to maintain impartiality, especially since we do have current commissioners who would be on the November ballot. Additionally, I'm deeply concerned about the message it sends to the public that someone employed by the city as an election inspector and precinct chairperson can behave disrespectfully towards their city commission and city employees, yet continue to work elections. I want to be clear in saying that I will not support or continue to employ any election worker who opens the door to scrutiny from the public related to my office's ability to conduct fair and impartial elections. I did not make the decision lightly, and prior to doing so, I consulted with the St. Clair County Elections Clerk, Debbie Ryan, and consented the materials released by the state of the Michigan Bureau of Elections relating to my ability to dismiss election workers, which I have tasked for your review. So, after I saw these two letters, I reviewed the file again, and the one thing that I did not see in the file was the social media postings listed in the letter to the election inspector from the clerk, and same thing, the Facebook postings, they were listed from the clerk to the commission as being reason to dismiss this election inspector. So, I'm like, okay, what was so bad that was said on Facebook that would entail dismissing election inspector? This is the process I went through. So, I submitted a Freedom of Information Act request, being a word in the file, for those actual posts. And you can see it right here. This is dated, put here, 8/29/2022. Should all have in your packet. That's the Freedom of Information Act request. And this is what it says. "All Facebook posts that were used to terminate election inspector. These posts are referenced in the letter dated 7/21, 7/27/2022. This letter was sent to the whole commission and was from Clerk Shannon Adams. The subject of letter is dismissal of election inspector, precinct chairperson." So, the lot of time went by, and the clerk did respond in time to my FOIA request, so that's not the issue here at all. But here's the response, and if you look in your packets, I'm not sure, I can't remember, did you guys have little numbers on the bottom of yours? I didn't know I did mine. I can't remember if I sent them in that way with you guys. If not, but if you look at this City of Marine City Freedom of Information Response Form and Statement of Cost, number four is checked. "The public record does not exist as named by another name reasonably known to the city, MCL 15.2333 (5), and that MCL stands for Michigan Compelled Law, and that is the law regarding FOIA or the Freedom of Information Act itself." That is what the response I got from the clerk. So, being that employee records of discipline and everything are FOIable, I was kind of surprised to see that response. So, I questioned it further. And I sent an email to the clerk asking, hey, you know, are you sure, you know, I should be able to have access to what these were, because they're being used in this regard? City clerk sent me an email back on September 6. "Phil, there is no public record responsive to your request. I viewed material on Facebook, but I did not maintain a copy as a public record." So, this is what led up to the appeal. There's two needs going on here. I'll start with that. The creation, first, the creation, which is, I'm going to read the MCL in a second, the public record was back in May when the clerk officially sought the, may not have been a need for the public record, but the creation or the writing was there. As soon as our city clerk, Shannon Adams, put in those two letters, those social media postings or those Facebook postings as reason, part reason for the dismissal of the election inspector, then the city should be required to retain that, and I believe, under the MCL. And here's why. If you look under the Michigan Compelled Law, just read off the one Mr. Davis has, I had a copy too, but if you go to, and there's so many i's in here, page two of it, the highlighted portion that Bob gave us, the city attorney highlighted, "Public record means a writing prepared, owned, used, in the possession of, or retained by a public body in the performance of an official function from the time it's created. Public record does not include computer software. This act separates public records into the following two classes." And I do want to clarify the computer software, section J underneath it states that they can't hand over whole lines of code, things like that, actual computer software, but I'm going to go a little further and read this. "Software means a set of statements or instructions that when incorporated in a machine, usable medium is capable of causing a machine or device having information processing capabilities to indicate, perform, or achieve particular function or task or result. Software does not include computer-stored information or data or field name if disclosure of that field name does not violate a software license." So, basically, it goes even further to describe what a writing means. Go further down in J. "Writing means handwriting, typewriting, printing, photo standing, photographing, photocopying, and every other means of recording, including letters, words, pictures, sounds, or symbols of combination thereof, in papers, masks, magnetic or paper tapes, photographic films or prints, microfilm, microfiche, magnetic or punch cards, discs, drums, hard drives, solid-state storage components, or other means of recording meaningful content." That's all in the Michigan Compelled Law. So, these Facebook posts, they're a writing, even though they're typed, and they may be stored on a Facebook server somewhere, whatever these posts may, may not be, or whatever they are, they're still a writing. There is no exemption that this falls under. There is no investigation going out to selection inspector that would exempt it from being disclosed. And they have a whole list of, a ton of exemptions, but I can assure you, this does not fall into one of those exemptions. So, what's going on is you've got the city using these writings against the selection inspector, but not being able to produce them upon a FOIA request. How can you use something, even though it's in a letter, necessarily there immediately, but how can you use that and then not be able to retain it as a public record? Basically saying, hey, we have this. These letters are saying, we're aware of this, we have this, but we're not going to give it out to anybody. We decided not to retain it, and we can't produce it as a public record, even though it's a writing, and the city used these writings against this individual for their dismissal. That's where this appeal comes in. I think they should be found. I think they need to be retained in the file, and they are a matter of public record because they are being used and attached to this election worker's dismissal. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
My response to that is that I never possessed Facebook screenshots. The Facebook screenshots were shown to me on another individual's device, or the postings were shown to me on another individual's device. They were never created as a public record by the city. And I can't go into further detail in regards to what I used and did not use in regards to the dismissal of the election worker in question without it becoming a performance review, which is not permitted.
Are we open for discussion now, or would there be a motion?
Is, Phil, are you, do you have a response to that response?
Yeah. Well, do I even respond, or they respond first, or how do they, just want to make?
No, I want to exhaust you and the clerk, and then it'll go before this commission for decision.
Well, even though they were shown third party to you or from another source to you, if you're going to use it against an individual on discipline, you still have to retain it, because it still becomes a matter of public record. So, our clerk should have went back, actually located those Facebook postings, printed them off, made sure they are the original ones, and put them in that file. They should have been retained. Ultimately, if you're going to use it against someone, it's a matter of public record unless it falls into one of the FOIA exemptions. Discipline is part of a public record of an employee's files, FOIable. That should be in there. It's still a writing. Apparently, this person wrote it. It's being used against the individual. Therefore, it's public record.
Again, I can't speak to what I did and did not use to dismiss this person. Mr. Alexiak is assuming that the Facebook posts were used as a reason, just because I referenced them. I cannot state that. And as for going back and creating a public record after the fact, my understanding of FOIA is that I am not obligated to create a public record where one does not exist.
Okay, the appeal is now before the commission for discussion and decision.
I have a question. Did you do any due diligence to see if those Facebook screenshots, or whatever you see from the third party, were actual Facebook posts from the person?
I was shown them by a third party who I consider to be a reliable source, who showed me not a screenshot, but showed them to me actively on their phone logged into Facebook.
Doesn't mean they were real.
Well, it doesn't mean that they were, they were not, and it doesn't mean they still exist or whether they don't. But the fact is, is that they were shown to me by that person, somebody that is a reliable person, and they showed me and logged in actively to Facebook. It wasn't like they had a, whatever, screenshot of it they were showing me as they were actually scrolling Facebook. Do I know if the individual, theirself posted it, and it wasn't some strange account? I don't know. But again, like somebody's dummy account or something, I don't know. But I can't, I can't speak to what was used to dismiss that person in open session. I cannot speak to what, because it becomes a performance review. Therefore, I believe the city attorney will support that. I cannot speak to what was used to dismiss her.
Even though it says it in the letter in the memo?
I referenced that I had viewed them. I did not say that that was a reason for having dismissed her.
No.
I found them concerning, but I didn't say that I was specifically dismissing her because of her Facebook postings.
Why put them in there, then?
I wanted the city to, the commission, to be aware that I had seen things that were concerning.
With Facebook, and so easy to do it, it should have been verified?
I verified it to the best of my ability. I did not subpoena Facebook to verify things.
Do we really have two issues here? One being, we don't have the documents to present, we don't have those Facebook posts, screenshots.
They don't exist.
And then, secondly, is the second issue of, that can be dealt with as another, as a personnel issue, that we should have, or possibly should have, taken them if they were used. But two different issues.
The matter before you tonight is strictly the appeal. You have a definition of a public record. For the public to hear, the public record is a writing prepared, has to be prepared, owned, used, in the possession of, or retained by the public body. Public body is the local government. In the performance of an official function from the time it is created. So, there's an element of creation. There's an element of creation in the statute. So, you look for a document, and you look to see, was it prepared, owned, used, in the possession from the time it was created? From the time it was created is the time boundary that something is or isn't a public record. So, from the time you create it, under this definition, it becomes a public record. But it also connotes an indication that it has to be something in the possession and retained by the public body. Here, I, I mean, you have to decide if, I think all you have to decide is, on the appeal, is what can you do? If it wasn't retained and it didn't become a public record, it's hard to disclose it. The second issue is the procedure that was followed, but I think that would be dealt with in a separate setting.
Go ahead.
So, you're saying, I'm just trying to get your full opinion here, Mr. Davis. So, you said that it has to be in the possession or retained in order to be a public record?
Well, if you look at, if you look at the definition, Mike, and I know, look to the or at the end of the first line, right?
Right.
And you know, because you know, or is not, is different than and, or separates thoughts. So, you have to go to each comma, and each thing becomes separate, right? Grammatically. So, it has, it means a writing prepared, number one. It's not, there's no and. Prepared, owned, used, in the possession of, or retained by the public body.
So, any one of those things?
It's an or, right.
Right. So, any one of those things would dictate whether or not it's a public record?
Yes, sir.
Any one of those things listed?
Yeah, and then you go on, and then retained by the public body in the performance of an official function, so that's the second qualifier, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then the last qualifier is from the time it was created, meaning the public record is a public record from the time one of those things happens.
Okay. So, because everything around the or makes it a public record, and one of the things that are around that or is used, doesn't that?
That is something for you to consider.
Well, I'm asking you what your interpretation of this specific part of this law is.
It has, it has to be demonstrated that it was used, then go to the modifier, Mike, skip the other language for a little bit, used by a public body.
Right.
In the performance of an official function.
So, it doesn't have to be possessed to be a public record?
No.
It doesn't have to be retained to be a public record?
Used is one of your choices.
Right, so it can just be used?
That's one of your choices in the statute.
Okay, so...
See, see, Mike, what, what's going on here is, 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 you have to look at it, like I said, let me, let me not go on an entire meeting without picking on the police chief. So let's say the police chief is, is in his, hi Jim.
Hi.
Yeah. So let's say Jim's in his office, okay, Jim? And, and he wants to, he's going to develop a new standard operating procedure for you guys to look at. It's going to involve something. To help him get, get going, he, he goes on seven other community police departments, SOGs, and then, and then brings to you his version of what he thinks you should adopt. That raises the question of whether everything Jim looked at is now a public record. Right? And if that were true, then this office would be going out the window with paperwork, because we'd have a public record everywhere. Because people consult things all the time. So you have to balance that, and you have to, you know, you, you hear what Phil says. You know, I don't think in, in Jim's case, that would be, you know, I don't think the fact that he looked at somebody else's standard operating procedure, you know, would, would create, create it as a public record, because he wouldn't, he probably wouldn't download it, and he probably wouldn't put it in his file. Now, if he does, and it becomes his research file, and he maintains that file, and there's now a file as to how I came up with my procedure, then it is a public record.
Okay, I kind of think that's apples to oranges a bit, I mean...
It's just to show you the extremes.
Right. I mean, we're, we're talking about the dismissal of a city employee, not creating...
I understand. I'm just trying to show you the extremes.
Okay, I'm not really sure how that's, but, so, the Facebook posts, Ms., Adams, right? The Facebook posts, now you said you had concerns with Ms. Watson's ability to maintain impartiality.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that was what led to the dismissal, correct? And it also says in the same paragraph that the Facebook posts were part of coming to that determination.
I found them concerning, but I can't, I can't go into a performance review of her.
No, I'm not asking...
But you're, you're asking me to answer things, or you're putting me in a position to where I may have to answer things that's going to end up in a performance review, and I have, I have to tread very lightly, because I cannot do that.
I'm just, I mean...
So, I found, did I find the posts concerning, as I mentioned in my letter? Yes, I found them concerning. Was that ultimately what led me to her dismissal? Again, I'm not prepared to discuss her dismissal in detail, as far as what ultimately led me to her dismissal. Any, beyond what I already said in public, beyond what's already public.
I don't think we're asking you that. We're not asking you what...
That's kind of what it feels like.
No, we're not asking you what came to that. We're asking strictly about the Facebook post. So in one spot here, it says that you were informed by somebody else, and you were shown some concerning Facebook posts.
Yes, I was.
There's one, and those were your ones you talked about, and I don't care what's in them, I'm not asking you that. But then down farther, it says, since that time, negative and slanted Facebook posts continued during the week leading up to the commission meeting. So, did you get those from that same person?
They were shown to me on a different cell phone.
So those were closer to things, so you could, do you look up Facebook posts for all your elected officials?
No.
Or your election worker?
No, I do not, I did not. It was shown to me by somebody else.
So you relied on this one, but you don't look up to see if any of your other election workers could be doing the same thing?
Nobody has brought that to my attention. It was brought to my attention in this case.
But as an election, as running an election, aren't you supposed to be making sure that all your workers are not engaged in it?
I'm not, I'm not the Facebook police.
I mean, but you're, you're starting to get into her performance, and we'd have to do that elsewhere. We need to focus on the appeal, which is, I think Phil is saying, why, why didn't that become a public record, and why didn't I get it from my FOIA? It was never downloaded and created, and it didn't exist, so the FOIA was denied. So you have to stay with the, I just don't want to...
Okay, I understand.
So we need to do a whole separate thing on the other part of it?
Yeah, if you want, but right now, it's, it's what do you want to do on a, on a FOIA denial for a document that did not exist?
Well, it does exist somewhere.
If it exists out, if it exists out in the public, then it's, I don't know, I'm, I'm still on like MySpace, whatever the hell that is.
This is a big thing now, about that. I mean, there's a lot of discussion about that.
No, I understand, I don't know any, I've never, I've never been on Facebook in my life, so I don't understand it. You guys are probably wiser than that.
We all use it, yes.
I don't, I've never been on it.
And it's easy to go out, let me explain this. Okay, so if you have Facebook and you're doing stuff, it's easy to go out and plug in somebody's name and look at their posts. It's not that hard. Anybody can do it.
Are you suggesting I spend city time monitoring Facebook?
I'm not, I'm not saying that, but all I'm saying is, if you're going to use something on one person, then you have to make sure other people...
But let's stay on the document.
But the fact is, is that I've shown this by somebody else.
So anyway, Facebook posts were used according to these two letters.
Oh, you're surmising that from...
No, it says right there.
Yep.
Negative and slanted Facebook posts continued, so obviously you must have seen it, regardless of who you saw it from.
But you're surmising that that's what I used, and again, I can't talk about that, as far as what was used and what was not used. You're surmising it just because I mentioned that I viewed them, that that was ultimately what was used for her dismissal, and I cannot talk about that.
Well, you used two things, the behavior and a city commission and that, that's what it says in your letter.
Look at your drawing conclusions.
Let's stay on the document. We have to stay on the document request.
Well, I understand, but I'm trying to figure out, it's in the letter, and it's a public record.
Well, maybe, maybe the question for the clerk is, do you have possession of these documents?
The answer is no.
Can you get possession of the document?
I'm not required to.
That's...
I'm not required to create a public record that doesn't already exist.
If, Mr. Davis, if, if the Facebook posts, let's just say, if there was Facebook posts used in the future for any employee matters, would, and the clerk did say that I did use those in the matter, would the Facebook posts have to be part of the city record?
I think the word, Mike, that you picked up on the word "used..."
Right, exactly.
...in the performance of a, of an official function could trigger that it be downloaded and put in the file.
So that's yes.
So if I download it and put it in the file? So moving forward, we could start making sure as a practice that we could do that?
And I don't, I, I'm being honest, I don't know if you can go back, I don't know how you, is it recreatable? I don't know, Mike. I really don't know. Can you go back and pull up those posts and then put them in the, I, I don't, I don't know.
If they're still out there, but individually.
Yeah.
I don't know if they erase or... You can delete some, you can amend them, an administrator can delete them. You can change your name.
My main concern is just going forward, protecting us from any kind of FOIA issues when people, you know, to try to define this and prevent it from happening again.
I think the mayor wanted to have training on this, and I think you start, your, your fundamental starting point is what you're doing right now, Mike. You have to parse out this language, and the word, the use of the word "or," where it's positioned in the commas, which you did. And, and, you know, the first, the first thing with any FOIA request is, do we have a responsive public record? If we do, and it's not exempt, we give it to the public. But you have to parse out what is a public record. And you, and you actually did that when you were going through the language.
Right.
Well, and I think here too, in, in the, the public record, it seems, means a writing, a writing that was prepared, used, whatever. And I think the point right now is, we never had that writing to begin with.
We did not prepare it, we never owned it, and we never took possession, and we didn't retain it. I think the question is, is did we use it?
Okay.
And so in the future, you know, maybe, maybe you could, we could adopt something if you use it, and it becomes something you use to carry out an official function, put it in the file.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think there's any debate from a reasonable person on the outside reading these letters, and, and the fact that she brought up Facebook twice, any reasonable person's going to look at that and say, yeah, she used those to, in her decision, no matter, you know, it's just, a reasonable person is going to believe that.
That's, that's your assumption to draw, and that's fine, and if you want to, if you want to include in procedures going forward, that if I happen to view a Facebook post of somebody before I dismiss them, that I make sure that I take a screenshot, then that's, that's again, something that can be created going forward.
It's an easy one.
I think another thing too, we need to look at, is before we do issues like this, we should be consulting with our HR people, too, to make sure that we're following a good process, and we're not getting the city into any type of situation. Instead of just issuing letters without talking to our HR people, which we do have, those people can tell you what kind of issues you're going to get into, depending on what you're using. So it would be benefiting that you always contact them before doing some of these, or show them what you're going to put out there, or, you know what I'm saying?
I can respect that. And just to speak to that a little bit, as we, I believe at this time, was another of our, we were in between treasurers, who is our functioning HR person? So, yeah, if, if that's what you desire, that going forward, with the election workers before any dismissal...
We have an HR attorney, though, too, also, that you could...
Yeah, there's, and I think, I think we, we spent separate time on this, I gave you a comprehensive memo that went through all the ins and outs of election worker issues. It's been quite a popular topic.
It's posted on the clerk's webpage.
On the Secretary of State's web, website and guidance documents. I think overall, the elections in Michigan went very well, but, you know, they were very closely monitored this, this last election. So, yeah, I mean, I mean, I, I don't know how it works, but can Phil go out there and get those screenshots?
Yeah. They're still there.
If they still exist, or if the person hasn't deleted them, or deleted the initial post, or wherever they are, then...
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't know, how would he know which ones they were either?
I don't know.
You know, because he doesn't know what you saw.
Point being, exactly.
So, could we discuss then, if, if we vote to want to grant his appeal, what does that look like, since there's no...
Well, if you're going to grant the appeal, then he's getting a document that we don't have.
So then, vote to deny it means it still just is what it is, because there's no document.
I thought the appeal was for the $7.60 or whatever.
That was the last one.
That was a prior one.
That was already...
But in the letters, she, she said that she had seen it, and at that time, she should have verified it. And she didn't verify it.
So, but were there some documents being withheld, or everything else was sent, just not the...
The Facebook post never existed, so in our possession, so that was the only thing that was questioned and asked for.
No, everything else was given.
Everything else was provided.
Okay.
So do we have to do anything to say in the future what we're going to do? Or do we just deal with that separate?
I would deal with that separate. You just, your, your job as the head of the public body under this statute, and I, you know, when we, when we do our training, I'll show you that part of the statute, it's pretty, pretty clear. You have to make a decision on the appeal. And then we have to communicate that decision to the appellant, Phil.
Yeah, I, I just know, like most corporations, and then if you're going to use things on the internet, they pretty much keep everything.
Yes, that I was never, I was never in possession, they, they were shown to me, it was somebody had their phone, and...
I understand, I understand. I'm just talking about what a corporation does. A corporation, if they, if, if you're in there and you're doing things, or they're watching stuff, they keep that stuff, and then they'll use it against you, one way or another. I mean, you, I'm sure you've dealt with it at a certain time. We just need to make sure we don't get into this situation again.
So now we would be looking for a motion, or just a, to grant or deny?
You have to act on the appeal, as presented.
Okay.
So you have to make the motion one way?
You either uphold the denial of a record for the reasons presented, and then deal with your other issues later, or you grant the appeal and say that the record be produced, but there's nothing to produce.
I will make a motion that we deny Mr. Alexiak's appeal for the Freedom of Information Act request, based on the fact that the records do not exist in our possession.
I'll support it. I mean, we just discussed it, that's basically what we can do.
I have motion and support to deny the appeal request, and is there any additional discussion then?
Is it really that we don't have it in our possession, or is it that she claims she didn't use it for the dismissal?
That we don't have it in possession, correct?
It's not in, she claims, she claims she did not physically create it and put it in the file, so it doesn't exist.
Right, but did, so we're saying she never used it?
No, no you're not. You're denying because it doesn't exist.
Yeah.
The, the record does not exist.
The motion is to deny because it doesn't exist. You can deal with the issue of use in a...
But does that put us in a bad spot, because we're admitting that we didn't put a record that was used?
I, I think you're going to deal with that issue in a separate...
Okay.
This is just because it doesn't...
It doesn't physically exist.
So, can you read your motion again, or tell me what it was?
It's a motion to deny the request based on the fact that the records requested do not exist...
Exist, okay.
...in our possession.
All right. Okay, any? Hey, roll call. Commissioner Clausen.
We've got other issues, but I guess I have to say yes to the law, but...
Commissioner Rourke.
I'll say yes also.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Van Damas.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Hillfrank?
Yes, with the qualification that we, going forward, produce these records when they're being used and store them.
Do we need to make some kind, because social media is such a...
Motion here.
New whatever thing, do we need to make some kind of new motions, or...
We should have something in our policies and procedures.
Right, yeah.
Put it on a future agenda.
And then, also, just an FYI, I recently received an email from a company that actually does social media archiving, so I don't know if that would be of interest, but I can bring more information to the commission at a later time.
Yeah, it's a big issue.
Yeah. Okay. Inducted on the agenda, we're on new business, 10A, appointment of a mayor pro tem. And I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion to...
You would make the motion to who you're nominating, and then someone would second.
All right. I am going to make a motion to appoint Lisa Hendrick as the mayor pro tem.
Support.
Support. I'm sorry, who supported first? Bryan?
Who beat you?
Any discussion?
How are you with gavel?
It's pretty good. I'm a little softer. I'll try not to throw it.
I'm never going to let you leave that one down.
All right, then no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Next, we have the appointment to the Community Economic Development Board, City Commission Representative, effective on November 30th of 2022. First, I'd like to say I do appreciate the comments that were made regarding this position. I would be interested in the position, but I also want to make sure if there's anybody else on the board that is still interested in that position. So can I bring that up first, before I make a motion to appoint somebody?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Anybody else would be interested in that?
Yeah, I'd be interested.
Okay. All right, based on that, I'll make a motion to appoint Mike Hillfrank to the Community Economic Development Board, to fill the City Commission Representative State, effective November 30th, 2022. Can I get a second?
Support.
Is that you, Lisa?
Yeah.
Sorry. I'm not used to you guys being at different ends of the table, so it's different.
Okay. Okay, I've got motion and support, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, Ted C., appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Committee, City Commission Representative, effective December 2nd, 2022. I've been made aware of two commissioners that are interested in, in the position. Commissioner Rourke is very interested in the position, as well as Commissioner Bryson. So I would ask if there's any discussion on that first? So I would ask if there's any discussion on that first? I mean, I don't know.
Needed is just one, correct?
Yeah, we need just one. I didn't know if perhaps one was interested, if they didn't think anybody else was kind of a situation, if. Okay.
I would, Mayor, if you don't mind, I do just want to make a point, to ensure that both individuals are well aware of what this board is about. This board is very fact-driven. They have a lot of review from the Planning Commission. Having some background in the field can be helpful to it, because of the nature of what this board does deal with. So, just throwing out there, if there's any question about what the board does, it might be worth researching, just to ensure whoever does get it is equipped to handle what they do deal with.
Mr. Davis, do you still teach your training class?
Yes, and if we get a new member, we will do that. For those of you who have sat through that training, you understand that I believe the Zoning Board of Appeals is one of the most important boards you have in the community, because it's judicial, and it's the last line of defense for folks who want to modify the zoning ordinance by way of a variance, or who are seeking an interpretation of the zoning ordinance, or who want to challenge the decision of a building official. It is, by statute, one step away from court, and the record made by a zoning board goes to the court in, in, in total, and it is not a, a review de novo, it's a review of that record. So it's real important that the records be made, and that they're factual, and that motions are supported properly, and that, you know, if you make a decision to deny a variance, it has to be sustained. So I view this, this is a very important board, and it's a, it's a complex legal process to make sure the board functions well.
Are those afternoon meetings?
What's that?
Are those afternoon meetings?
They're evening.
Evenings.
Evenings.
So if it helps, I will say, prior to sitting in this seat, I did serve on the Planning Commission for, what, year, year and a half, give or take, something like that. So I do have a fair amount of experience with how the Planning Commission works, and how the ZBA interacts with it.
We're the, we're the last stop for him before Circuit Court.
Yeah, 1253606 places the ZBA as the final draw before Circuit Court. Essentially, what, when you go to the ZBA, what you're saying is, hey, we know this commission got together and passed an ordinance, and we know the Planning Commission gave them the text to pass an ordinance, but we want to violate your ordinance. That's basically what a variance request is. So you have to, you have to hear that out, and it's, it has to be handled very judicially, because, you know, denials can go to Circuit Court, or neighbors who are aggrieved because you granted the variance can go to Circuit Court. So it's all about the record. It's all about the right things being in the record. And I, I have, in, I always volunteer, it's a non-billable event for me to come out here, sit down with your ZBA. I even bring them pizza, and we sit down, and I walk them through, what I do is I start, you're already in court, and I walk it backwards to your meeting. What should you have done at the meeting, so you wouldn't be in court? And it's, it's pretty effective.
And if the judge doesn't understand it, he can send it back to, to discuss it again.
Yes. So anyways, that's my input.
One of the things, too, I think we always have to remember, even on any of our boards, I don't want to ever discourage people if they have never done things before, or are limited. Most people that we get on these boards are new, and they learn. It's just part of the process. Pretty much everybody up here, I think, didn't do this before, and once you do it, you learn. So you always have to give people, we never want to discourage anybody in our community from joining any board by making a claim they have to have prior experience, anything, because they don't. As long as they have the will to learn, they can do the job. That's just my comment.
I'm a very factual person, and I learn fast, and I read and understand a lot of things, and I think I'd be very good on the board.
Okay.
Make a motion to appoint Rita Rorig to the ZBA board?
Support.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, next item is attendee resolution number 18-2022 on the Tot Lot Revitalization Spark Grant. Do you want me to read that out? Would you like me to read out the resolution?
Motion.
Do you want to do a motion to discuss, and then I can talk you through, or do you want to talk first?
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number 018-2022.
Support.
Okay, and now any discussion?
Holly, would you like to?
Yes, absolutely. So, the Michigan DNR has put out Spark Grant opportunities, where we would go for a no-match grant for, it's geared again towards the Parks and Rec concepts, hence the DNR. But there's three phases for this. Once you're in the first phase, if you're not chosen, your project could roll into phase two, roll into phase three. So it's important to be in at the beginning of the phases, you have a better opportunity of getting them. So, some of the staff and I have been very focused on what grants are out there, what projects in the city we need to be working on, and we've been talking about which park upgrades we've needed for months. We've been talking about a review of the Tot Lot, for one, because the playground equipment is very old, it's over 23 years old. We've heard complaints that there is no restroom on the site at that park. So what we want to look at doing, because this is an easy, this is an easy application, we're not reconstructing anything, we don't need engineering, we don't need all this stuff. We can do a prefab bathroom, and we can replace the old equipment in a quick and easy grant for the first one. So this would be for new equipment at the Tot Lot and the restroom. And I will tell you that, if not, we did not complete the grant application, and the numbers that are attached to this are not correct, because it's not done. This was something that we, you know, the numbers we threw together on here were just a preliminary to get here. Frankly, we didn't want to put a bunch of time and hours into this, if it wasn't going to be supported. So we want to know that the board supports the efforts of this grant, and then we will finalize the application and turn it in. So we're seeking your approval tonight to go forward with this grant, requiring no-match from the city.
Right, I think that's the key point. It requires no-match from the city. The Spark funding entity just wants to know, is this something the city is interested in?
And what, what park is that, the Tot Lot?
Tot Lot's off, um.
Something.
Yeah, Washington and Main. It's the little kids, just a big play equipment down there on the corner. It's really used quite a bit. It's a cute little park.
So, question that I had with this, and, and I am in full support of the Spark Grant and these projects. I did see that in the information from the Michigan Spark Grant Application Review, it does say that we have to have time for a public hearing. It doesn't have to be a special public hearing, but the application must be an agenda item, open to discussion by the general public. If we approve this resolution tonight, I know our next meeting, doing the once a month, is December 15th. Now, the deadline is December 19th. If we were to put on that December 15th meeting, then, the, the application, and then let people know that's the public time to come to speak to us, we're not doing, that would still give you plenty of time to get it in by that December 19th deadline?
We will, we will turn it around.
Okay.
Because it's, I, this is, like I said, this is an easy one, to get teed up for the first one, we're almost there. It's just we wanted to know that there was support before we finalized it. And then, this can be used, because the resolution is its own agenda item on this agenda, that helps suffice, too, because anybody could have come during public comment to talk about the agenda item that was on here, which is the Spark Grant, as well. So, we can turn around and have whatever you need on the agenda in December as well, to get the simple phase one.
And on this thing, you're talking about a bathroom there also?
Mm-hmm.
And we're having problems with all the bathrooms we have, with the people destroying them?
Well, we can't not, we can't deny people in the city bathrooms, just because there's bad eggs out there vandalizing. We're going to be looking at options for cameras around the city. I'm trying to price out some different things, and then I'll probably, I'll be working with Mike and Jim on what's feasible. But we've been listening to the parents, and the parents have said they want a bathroom at the Tot Lot. That's a long way to run, when you've got a six-year-old who's got to go. So we're trying to listen to the, the people and what they want. So it'd just be one of those prefab one-holders, they're easy to go in and power wash and clean, but it would give parents a needed benefit.
Is there like a portage on?
No portages, not in a residential area.
Well, I mean, are you going to go in and clean the one-hole?
Yeah, a prefab bathroom that GPW can go in, just like you do with the, the other ones.
Do you use the VAC truck?
Yeah.
So you're going to hook it up to the sewer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like our other ones.
I think that's what he's trying to get to.
Yeah.
You said there was no engineering cost, but it says 6,000 engineering costs, and 6,000 for the architect for the bathroom.
This is, I, I said that's not right.
Well, okay.
We didn't, we had to plug in some numbers for today, this is not accurate.
Okay.
It's not accurate, because it's not on.
So, I'd love to see the Tot Lot fixed, because, yes, the stuff that we got from Harson's Island, didn't we get that from over there?
2,008.
Yep, and, but, I don't know how people can give input if they don't know what we're anticipating putting in here. I mean, I'd like to see what some of these things are, because between this grant and the other grant we're going to talk about next, there's some discrepancies in the different, and I, I know you're saying the costs aren't, the stuff is incorrect and not accurate, but I don't know how to vote on something when I don't have all the facts on the items. I mean, I'd like to see what we're doing, and I'd like the public to see what they're doing, and it's, I don't know if it's going to give us enough time to get in by December to have a public hearing, so that they can see what we're talking about. You know what I'm saying? People have to visualize what the intent is to put in here.
I'll be honest with you. There's a lot of discouraged individuals with how hard we have had to fight for grants. My staff was not willing, and I was not willing to make them put the time and effort into this, to come in here and bang my head against a wall and fight for free money. If there's future support for us to go after grants, we will work harder on the front end. But I'm not going to waste people's time. We have other things of the city we can be working on than working on these, if there, it's not going to come to fruition.
But didn't you say you've been talking about this for months?
We've been talking about park projects that we've wanted to do in the city. This came up, and this was an option to fund it.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been talking about park upgrades since last fall.
So where are the pictures and things to go with it? The site plan, don't you have anything? When you looked up this ADA Playstation for $50,000, didn't they have a picture on the website? You could have printed out?
Oh, yeah.
Well, that would have been nice. That would have taken time.
We weren't putting the big package together for this yet. We weren't going to spend a bunch of time and hours putting this together.
But you want us to approve it?
I want you to approve a grant for free money to replace park equipment and put a bathroom in there.
Well, you could put a big mushroom plow down there. I don't know what you're going to do.
Well, we can't, because we've already talked in past meetings that, I mean, it comes back here. That stuff comes back here.
Could we amend the motion, then?
This is just timing.
If we wanted to approve the resolution tonight, pending it come, the application come back for the public review in December for final grant approval.
And then be timely filed on the.
And then we could timely file it, but then if we didn't do the final approval in December?
But we need to make sure we get the information out now, too, that we're going to discuss it, so that people can come here and tell us what they feel about it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And then, the other thing is, is it not that these grants, we have to put the money up front, and then we have to get the money back?
Um, I don't.
Yes, you do.
I don't know.
That's what it says here.
Yes, you do.
So this one's a reimbursement?
Yeah, and you can do it in increments, they said.
Can I, can I?
Yeah.
So, does that, I mean, I don't, I don't think, you know, we're not up here just trying to be a thorn in your side.
Yeah.
Like, all we're trying to do, so, when you make decisions for this city, there's the whole population here that wants to know about those decisions, and if they don't like those decisions, it's not your door that they're going to knock on, it's ours. So we're the ones that are going to have to answer to when things don't necessarily go well. So we just want to be included in the process, and I don't really think that's an unreasonable request.
And I don't think that I've, I'm not including you in the process. The process starts with getting your approval to go forward with this grant, wanting to know if you're in or you're out. With, then, we will put the rest of the package together and bring it to you for presentation. But without the "I'm in" or the "I'm out," we're not wasting hours of time trying to guess.
No, I, I understand, I understand that. And, and like, the, the whole rhetoric, the, the conflictual rhetoric is just, it, it just needs, it's, it's okay.
Oh, stop.
Like, it really, we're just trying to, to restore some, some respect to this board, and every time.
Okay.
No, that's not, that's not what I'm saying at all. I'm, 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 I approve, I support it.
It's not, okay, money, it's our money.
I support it. I entirely support these grants. What, what I, hold on. What I don't support is us, the elected body, not being included in the decisions, not being included in site plants, such as with the, the bike, with the, hold on, hold on, hold on, can I, can I finish?
Not to that point.
Can I finish? So with the bike paths and all that stuff, you really didn't include the commission very much in that whole process. You, you kind of just.
I don't think that's what we're talking about.
And, and again, like, these, these decisions, I'm not opposed to the beach, I'm not opposed to the Tot Lot at all, but you should be coming to us and kind of asking, like, what do you guys want to do, instead of making these decisions on your own?
Well, let me, let me give you an example, okay? So we had that Kaboom grant that we put behind the library, and the whole commission was involved in that. We were involved in the location, we were involved in what was going in it, we were involved in, because we had to move it, the, the location was bad when we first started. So there was a lot that the commission needed to do in there, and, and we saw what was going in there, and we made the adjustments and all that, but we were involved right from the start. Everybody loves these grants, they're great. But how do I go back to the people in the community, and they come up and say, well, what are we getting? What are you putting in this park? I can't even tell them. I'd like to tell them, I want to tell them, I want to show them all the stuff we're going to do, but I want to make sure that we are going to get all that information before it gets moved down the road, you know? And, and actually, that's what it says in the Spark Grant. What I get concerned about is if we don't follow their directions, and then we spend the money, and they say, well, you didn't follow the directions, so therefore, we're not going to give you the money back. That's, that's a concern, especially based on the fact.
Well, they didn't follow any of the directions. This was the first step to decide whether or not we go forward with the rest of the process. That's all this is. Yes or no, you're on board to move forward. Then the package will be created to come to us for.
No, you're asking us to approve it, not to go forward.
I'm asking you to approve the resolution that says we want to go forward. I, there's not, the whole package is not here for approval. The application has not been turned in. This is just the first step.
Right. And nobody's opposed to that. Like, nobody's opposed to, to getting, to moving forward with this at all. The only thing we're opposed to is, is not being included in the planning process.
Yeah.
So, could, could we amend the motion, then? Or do you be amicable to include the application?
I'm unwilling to.
Okay.
So, you have a current motion and a current second?
Yes, to approve 18-22.
Yep, and I redo my second. Just before we continue, though, I mean, I do get it. The, I work as an engineer, you know, our management would love it if I came up with every possible scheme to do something that you could possibly fathom, and it's not, you're not able to do it. Okay, so, you know, we need to know, are we, you know, our city management needs to know, are we interested? And then we can get into the nuts and bolts of it.
Okay, so.
So, I get it from both sides.
So, why don't we just make a motion that we're all in favor of it, and then let this resolution come to the next meeting with all the information?
I think, did we just make a resolution that we're interested in a Spark Grant?
Well, it doesn't say we're interested. It says we're doing it.
Yeah.
So, all I'm saying is, why not just make a motion that, yes, we approve, that we wanna go forward with these two items, that we're into it, but we want all the information at the next meeting so that we can make a proper decision? It gives us enough time to go to the December, I think there's another, there's more than just the December one.
Yeah, there'd be three rounds, but they haven't, they haven't released the second dates yet.
So, why not do it that way and bring the resolution back at the next meeting with all the documentation and approve it? I don't see that that's unreasonable.
I do have some questions about the beach.
Yeah.
We're on the tot lot right now, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so why not just do, can we just, okay.
So, we, but, I think the point is, we agree that we want to redo the tot lot?
Correct.
Or do we not agree that we want to redo the tot lot?
No, it'd be nice to do, but I wanna see what's going in it before I approve it. That's all.
That's all.
Sure, and I'm, I'm just saying, we, we have the chance to do it either way.
Yeah, so what difference does it make if we just postpone this to the next meeting to get all the information, then we approve it? I don't see that that's the issue.
I don't know.
That, I mean, I'm saying I'm for it. I'm just saying.
And don't we need some public input at the next meeting, too?
Yeah.
We have to get public input at the next meeting anyway.
So, this is the resolution, right? And then the next meeting will be the actual application, and then at that point, we vote on that as well, correct?
I don't know. She'd have to, is that a fact or not?
It says, right on this public input and resolution section on the Spark Grant, that the application, they speak separately on a resolution and separately about an application. The application must be an agenda item, open a discussion by general public at a meeting of the local unit. Previously, it speaks about a resolution, so I read that as two different documents.
Yep.
Right.
Does that sound right?
So, it does need a resolution.
Yep, so the resolution.
And then it reads an application?
And then it speaks to the application.
Yeah.
So, we could approve one and then have the other at the next meeting.
With all the documentation?
With all the documentation, and we continue it moving forward.
Yeah, because to get community input, we have to show them what we're doing. I mean, there's no other way for the community to give input.
And can we, can we get updates along the way, Ms. Tatlin? Like emails as far as what you guys are.
I don't know how exactly that'll work. We, it's gonna take time for our grant preparer to pull all of this stuff together.
Right.
And, so I, we'll, we'll bring you the package at the next meeting. That'll be the easiest thing to do, because she's gonna have two of them to put together, plus her other job duties.
So, that'll include the application, correct?
Yes, that'll be the application and all the information.
So, my only concern there is that'll give us, if, if we don't really like what's going on in the application and the site plan, that gives us four days to, to fix it.
You get the meeting before, you get the packet, it'll cover as part of your agenda packet, which you guys get by email the Thursday before the meeting, or I'm sorry, the Thursday, the week before the meeting, and then you also get it hand-delivered to your house before the meeting. So, you guys have that whole week to be able to review, ask questions if you need to, to be able to clarify different things, and then if you don't like it, you vote it down, and then.
But we gotta get it out to the public.
Well, it'll go out to the public as well, and then it gets submitted. I mean, if she, if you guys want it submitted at a different meet, at a different timetable, then it would get submitted at a different timetable with the repairs and the fixes.
Could we get the packet to go out at the same time as we get it this time, just because it gives the people enough time to see it?
What about posting just the grant proposal? Would that work?
Could you do it separately on the website?
That way, it's a smaller entity, and they won't need to dig for it.
Right, yeah. Can we post it separately as a?
I could work with our, with the grant, the person that's doing the grant writing and see if it can be posted under public notices.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's do that.
And then, too, if we need to email it, it'd be small, presumably small. Because putting the entire packet together, as we know, has caused some email.
Okay, so, so we're gonna approve this resolution, and then at the next meeting or in between, we're gonna get a whole package of, with the application and all the information, or at least in the next packet, so that we can do a final approval.
So, will there be an opportunity to, to change things? I mean, is that we just, how, how will that work? If we get the, the thing in our packet, we look at it, we say, "Oh, you know, this just isn't gonna work," or?
You have from the time of the next meeting till the 19th.
And I'll be honest with you, these are not, these two are not in depth. This is not like what we wanna propose to you for Phase 3 and bring some conceptual ideas to you. This is replacing existing infrastructure on already-owned property. So, this is, we are replacing what is there with safe new equipment. We're not getting all crazy, putting new stuff in. So, there's, we're, that's why we don't need all this engineering. That's why there's not gonna be a lot of room for discretion, because based on distances and size, there's only gonna be one place to put this and one place to put that, and we're putting the new things on the existing footprints. Things like, we don't have the option to get a lot of super creative with some of these, especially in this timeframe.
Yeah, I absolutely agree, but with the tot lot, that's, I mean, there's not very much variation with, with that. But the beach, I think there's a little bit more as far as.
We won't have time to execute a bunch of changes. So, we have some things that need to be fixed down there that are old and decrepit. We have some things that need to be cleaned up, screwed up, and replaced. That's what this is. This isn't a fresh overhaul on the beach. We don't have the time to put that together.
We're not there.
Okay, are we on the beach right now?
No, we're still on the tot lot.
We need a vote.
There's a vote, there's a motion and a second on the tot lot issue.
So, do we have to include anything, though, about that we're gonna, or? It's just agreed, or will it be documented in the minutes that the application comes to the next thing with all the stuff? We don't need to make that as part of the motion.
It's literally the next step that has to happen, so, I mean.
It, that has to happen.
Right, that has to happen, anyway.
There is no discretion there. That has to happen, so it doesn't necessarily need to be.
Okay.
You could add something like importance with Spark Grant.
Requirements, yeah.
Requirements.
I did have just a couple more questions. So, the, the way that the, the grant process works is, you know, you have to put, you can put up the three apps in at once, and you have to prioritize those, those apps, and the DNR takes that into consideration when they're, you know, thinking about what they're gonna improve. So, what, what was, what would be the priority? Which one? And is there possibly a third app that we can submit?
We, so, these are the two that we can turn around the quickest to get in on Phase 1. So, this is why we chose tot lot and beach for the next one, because we could turn them around. We know what needs to be fixed and repaired on these two. We could turn this around. We do wanna make a pitch to you guys for Phase 3-1, which is a big conceptual thing out at King Road Park. So, it's gonna be a, but we need time, and that one's gonna require engineering and things like that, so.
Is that one gonna satisfy the whole, it's supposed to be within a half a mile?
Well, we'll talk about that one when the time comes.
But will be more included in that one?
You sure will.
Okay, in regards to the Resolution 18-20-22 for the tot lot revitalization grant, there's been a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
An amended motion.
An amended?
Re-second.
Re-second.
I'm sorry, what did you amend it to? Because I've got approve 18-22, and I heard Jake say it wasn't.
I did not amend it.
He did not amend his motion.
Oh.
It's just approval of 18-22.
Okay. No other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
The only thing, like I said, you're gonna document, though, what we're gonna do for the next meeting.
You have to do it.
I mean, it has to be done, so it doesn't need to be, but I will make sure that it is.
I would like to see it in the minutes, just so that everybody understands what we're doing.
Yep, I will make sure it's in there. All right, roll call vote. Commissioner Rorig?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilfink?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Hey, Resolution 19-20-22, the Marine City Beach Improvement Spark Grant. Some of the conversations are very long, the same.
Need a motion to open the discussion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 019-2022 regarding the Spark Grant for the public beach bathrooms, restrooms. Support.
Okay, have a motion and a support. Any additional discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Dear, doing a beach house restrooms, I don't see any, you're demolishing it, I assume, the old ones and putting new?
Old ones.
I don't see a cost for demolition.
Because that's not done. Yeah, that's not done.
That'll be an additional.
That will be, yeah, that whole thing will be revised to be accurate when the time comes.
Okay. Also, on the industrial waste receptacles, it says $2,000. On the top one, it's $700 or $800.
Because it's not done.
Are we having more than one, or it's this?
We will.
$2,000 for a trash can seems an awful lot of.
It's actually not compared to prices now, but it's not.
Well, but in the top one, it's $700.
Figures aren't right.
Because it's not done. It's not done.
Okay. And this adaptive picnic table, $5,000? I looked it up on iPhone, $900 to $1,500 for a picnic table. Are we getting more than one?
Probably. But again, it's not done.
So, you can see why I'm having trouble making a decision since I don't have information.
That information will come accurately.
I understand, but yes, we don't have a, and the wood fencing, where is that going?
I don't know, right at this moment. We'll bring, I, that, we'll bring that plan to you at the next meeting in the package.
And a $10,000 storage shed, what is it gonna be used for?
The beach toys. The beach toys and lifeguard materials and DPW supplies and whatever else they need.
And so, why not just put a room on the beach house? And have a separate door for that?
I can talk to the DPW if they would prefer.
That would seem like a more substantial structure, and then not having two separate things.
I can, I can run that by the DPW if they would prefer.
Because I've seen it in other places, they do it, says janitor, you know, city, city whatever, and you have a separate door from the outside door. Okay, so, see, see why we're having questions? And, concrete sidewalks? There's no concrete sidewalks over there?
It's not done.
It's not done. The sidewalks?
Yeah.
So.
We will get DPW involved to have the proper square feet and the cost, but right now, concrete prices change by the day. We were not gonna try to attempt to put some stuff in.
That's not what I'm asking. Why do we need new sidewalks, is why I'm asking, what I'm asking.
Because there may be some sections that need to be redone, and there may be a new section that we do up to the bathroom. So, those are just things, again, the package is not complete, so that is an inaccurate list at this time.
Okay.
We just wanna know if we're going forward or not with the concept.
Okay.
On this, on this second one here for the beach, is it the beach? The grant writer, there's zero, and there was $1,500 on the other one.
Because it's not done. The application is not done.
Is the grant person gonna get paid for this, this second one?
The application is not done, Commissioner. There will be a, there will be a charge for the grant writer.
And we'll have all that information.
The next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
Okay, any further?
Yeah, um, let's see, where do I want to go? So, where, where did the $85,000 figure come from for the beach house? I'm just wondering, is that from Mike?
No, right now, it came from the sky. I mean, it's not a complete application, so we were plugging in numbers and not plugging in certain numbers, because it just, it's not a complete application, so it's not a realistic number. We weren't bringing you the package tonight. I, I honestly, I, we probably shouldn't even even put this in there, because it's just confusing the situation. All we are here to do tonight is ask conceptually if you want us to move forward on a Spark Grant for beach improvements. Period. That's all I need to know. And then, vote on the resolution. That's it. Again, we will bring the package to you next month.
And then the discrepancy?
The timeline is tight for the first phase of the Spark Grant. We're just trying to get in on this with improvements.
Okay.
It's understandable, but, I mean, I know the timeline's tight, but we still have an obligation to.
And how much, do you have any idea, like, how much money they may be giving to such a small city like, like ours? Just in your grant writing experience?
It depends, I, there's no way to know. There, it just, it depends on who applies, how much they apply for, what time of, or what type of projects are out there, what the criteria the DNR uses. We have no way to know that.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilfink?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Rorig?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item 10F, Resolution 20-22, to open the Guy Center Fund Restricted Account. Can I have a motion to approve and adopt Resolution 20-22 to permit the opening of the Guy Center Fund Restricted Account from Fifth Third Bank?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 020-2022. Support. To make a Guy Center Restricted Bank Fund with Fifth Third.
Have a motion and a support. Any discussion?
This is truly just a formality. The city staff are not allowed to create bank accounts without commission approval. With the sale of 303 Water completed, we need a bank account, a restricted bank account to put the money in. So, it's just, this is for a formality for the bank and for the auditors to know that we went through the proper channels to open a bank account.
And to honor the Guy will and trust.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilfink?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Rorig?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving on. Item 10G, 303 South Water Sale Proceeds Allocation to Discuss.
So, Commissioners, what seems like a long time ago, on July 20th of 2021, I gave you a detailed memorandum concerning the history of the property, and I, in this current memo, asked that you went back and read that. The presentation that I gave you in '21 was very factual. It wasn't legally based. It was just fact and research. Provided you with a supporting documentation with multiple exhibits. Property has now sold, and it raises the issues that I raised on Pages 7 and 8 of the prior memo on how we allocate those sale proceeds into current dollars. Having talked with accountant, staff, and, and others, I, I think there are three options, and I laid those out in Section 2 of this memo. I wanna remind you and the, and, and the public, because I've gone back with the help of city staff and looked at more minutes. 303 South Water Street was purchased using entirely general fund money. The city then sold the two donated lots, known as the Guy donation, and then reimbursed the general fund in all except for $3,975. In the end, as I had said before, 303 was purchased by using money generated by the sale of the two bequeathed properties and almost $4,000 from your general fund. So, it was a combination of those two. It, it, it's my opinion that the general fund must be made whole for its part, part of the purchase, and we also, as Brian just articulated, we have to honor the donation directives, and that's why we're opening up the separate fund. You also have to look at capital improvements that were made to the facility before the city, in my opinion, took over as an office. So, anyways, I, I, I think you need some time to look at this, so I've given you the three options. I think a matter should come back to you in December for action on selecting one of the options or some other option that you come up with.
Could you, can you send that out to the new people, the other document?
Oh, I see what you're saying. The, I thought it.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, I did. It was attached to this.
This is all of it?
Exhibit 1 is my July memo.
All right. I thought you were trying to, because we've gotten so. All right. I thought you were trying to... Because we've gotten so much, Hunter.
I know, I know. We've really, but you know, I think this one has to be thought through, you know, carefully. But I think you have to consider, as you think about it for a month, you have to consider that, you know, the money came from two pockets, and you have to make, bring those pockets into current dollars, and then take a look at your sale proceeds and use math to, you know, carve it up in the right percentages. So if you look at exhibit two, I was able to get some math done on the issues to show you, as you think about it, between now and your December meeting, what that looks like under option one, option two, and option three. So you have the numbers as you're contemplating over the next month. It's important that we get this one right. So a motion at this point is to receive and file and place this on the agenda for December.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Any further discussion? Down here for roll call votes?
For receiving file?
Just an all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, in the agenda, we have no items that were moved from consent, and now we're onto City Managers' Report, 12A.
Okay, just a couple things. I just want the public to know that, you know, we are paying attention. We are listening to you. That's why we are working on the different parks and the improvements at these parks. Again, we hear you. We see Facebook posts. We see all that stuff about the suggestions and things, so please know, we are working on that. That's why we did hear you about the tot lot. That's why we did hear you about the bathroom at the tot lot, and we totally agree. It's time to spruce up the beach. There was a lot of really positive feedback this summer from people far and wide that came to Marine City to use our beach. People were putting pictures on Facebook all the time, you know, saying, "Look where I am, you know, it's beautiful," and the city should be proud of that. It's a really cool asset that you have here. So again, we hear you. We know that there's definitely some downfalls there that we want to improve, bathrooms, the look of the break wall area, the gabion baskets, the sidewalks, et cetera. And staff's been working hard on, you know, coming up with concepts and ideas, and luckily, these grants have come, been forthcoming that we can apply to. So again, we hear you and we are working on that. One of the other concepts that I briefly touched on is the staff has been working on an overarching concept of a destination park here in the city. We've heard the asks for skate parks. We've heard the ask for splash pad. We've heard the ask for new playground equipment. So the staff have gotten together, and we will eventually make a pitch to this commission when we're ready. We would like to make King Road a destination park here in Marine City. Everything from the skate park to the splash pad to a walking path around the park to completely revamped baseball fields and accessory buildings and signs. We'd like to fix the sled hill, fix the parking, put in new playground equipment. We have the space. We have the amenities. We have the infrastructure there. It wouldn't jam up residential areas because of the flow of traffic out there, and we think that we can make this really be a cool thing and bring all those other amenities that the city's been asking for to one place where we could facilitate it. And being as it's already owned property by the city, it's easier to go after grant money when you already own the property versus going through property acquisition, which I know we have been talking about with the Washington Life Center area. I'm still on board to try to get the school district to work with me on a park on the north end of town because we, again, we know that that's a need, but that also requires property acquisition, so that one might take a little bit longer. So we have some really cool ideas that we've been putting together and working hard on for months, and now it's trying to execute funding opportunities to be able to realistically bring that to the city. So we are listening. I want you all to know that, and we're working hard to try to produce that and bring viable options to the commission to vote on. And then I do want to just make note that we had a lot of really positive feedback, and Chief Langston's here tonight with the business inspections having been happening. He's been going into businesses, and we've had really positive feedback on what's been going on with that. People do not mind having him there. We've heard some, you know, things, people are complying, and I just want to say that I'm excited that that's happening moving forward, and so far, it's been positive, so we're grateful. So again, there's a lot of different things going on. I do want the group to know that I was at a SCOTTS meeting this week, which is a road funding meeting. Brian's eyebrows perked up down there. So the county has come into some more money from backdated years to create more road funding opportunity, which is great. The downfall is that Marine City does not have a lot of federal aid roads, and that tends to be right now where the money is going to be pushed. So I am going to work with in upcoming weeks, people at the county level to try to get in line for how we can potentially even look at designating a few more roads in Marine City, Fed aid roads, to make us more eligible for outside dollars. That opportunity won't come for a year to make that pitch to that group, from what I'm told, and currently, none of our Fed aid roads right now need any work because they are the last ones that we just did. And with the ratio that's used to figure out how much Fed aid money you get, the city of Marine City is eligible for about $35,000. So we could go fix a square on DeGersi, but that'd be about it. So again, I just want to reiterate, it's not that we are not going to the table. It's not that we are not searching for road funding dollars. Road funding dollars are not either there or they are not accessible to us right now based on what is available, but we are trying. So please know, that is not something we are ignoring by any means. Again, other than that, it's just, things have been cruising along. You know, we've got, the Marina acquisition is finalizing in the next month and a half, month, month and a half, which will be very exciting, so we will be up and running by spring. So there's just a lot of things that are kind of closing out at year end that we've been working on and ideas that we're trying to tee up into 2023 year. So good and positive, and I look forward to continuing that, so. That's what I got.
For the Marina closing, was it actually December 1st, or did it happen?
It has not happened yet. In fact, I saw...
It said November. I was just curious if that was a typo or...
It's going to be right around there. It's close. I just saw the first draft of titled work papers coming through that aren't correct yet. So they're trying to line everything up.
Okay.
Because remember, it's a two-part acquisition. One part, we're acquiring from Six Rivers that has already purchased the property, and the other one, we're acquiring directly from the Catchell family. So it's a little convoluted, the mess of how it works, so the title company has got to do their due diligence to make sure it's a hundred percent, so.
All right, I got a couple of questions. They had the 26 mile road corridor presentation, I guess, at the event center, and I see you have on here about the monthly meetings, and I talked to Wade Trim, and they said a lot of that stuff should be rolling out. So are you going to be bringing back more of that information to us about the corridor?
Yes.
Because we should be involved?
Yeah. There hasn't been anything to hand out yet because it's all been at these informational meetings, and everything's been so conceptual right now where the studies are, they're pulling in the information to give back, so.
Because that's what Wade Trim said, that that's what these monthly meetings that should be rolling down to us. The other thing too is, it says here, Marina site plan designs are being worked on. Again, after we've had this discussion tonight, please make sure that we're involved in this and what's going in there and what it's going to look like. And same with the destination park. I mean, we all need to be involved. We all need to be able to roll this out to the public so that they know what we're doing and what the concepts are, and to see if they have any ideas or input that they can give us on this stuff, so those are the three.
It definitely all comes through you. This is, it's just, the ideas are starting, and we're trying to bring you things. I can't give you something to vote on if I don't bring you the concept in the first place. So we are trying to tee this stuff up. We're working hard on it, actually.
Last thing. All right. In the water bills, there was a sidewalk inspection letter. I would hope that we would discuss this first in our next budget before this gets rolled out because usually, the city was cutting it to four. We only did two-inch lifts last time. This is going to be much more costly, and I think we really need to look at our budget first before we roll this out and whether we're going to roll it out in sections again like we did the last time. So I was kind of concerned to see this out so fast before we've even had a chance to discuss it, so.
The point of that was we wanted to get people thinking about the fact that in 2023, we were going to be focusing on sidewalks because we've heard a lot about it. We've heard people talking about it. We've seen a need for it. So we wanted it on people's radars to start focusing on, if I need to start working on this, I need to put a little money away or whatever, that it's coming down the pipe.
True, but we need to make sure that we got the one-third reimbursement cost. There's my... Because the only reason why we didn't do it all the last time was because of those costs. Now, I know some of that came in lower, but only because we didn't go after everything. The only other thing too with this is, yes, there's a lot of sidewalks that are bad, but we also have to be looking at what people are going through right now with their budgets. They might want to do these, but some people just may not be able to, and I know we used, some of it, we used to put on their tax things, but we really need to discuss these things, I think, a little bit first before it goes out to the public to make sure that we're going to be able to have the money to do that. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Anything else?
Have you reached out to the East China School District regarding that property next to Washington?
Every month since February.
So you're emailing and you're not getting a reply?
That was the case. There was a few conversations with the superintendent where she did tell me that she was going to kind of shoot it up the flagpole and get back with me. It did drag out since February. The Planning Commission Chairman did step in and ask if he could nail her down, if he could have a conversation, and he did. And I also know another commissioner did. So just in the last two weeks, I have had a conversation with the superintendent, and she has explained that there is an interest. Because what I had asked for, again, before I went out and got proposals for land surveys, for lot apportionments, and appraisal costs on property, and put a whole proposal together to send to East China, I wanted to know if East China was even interested in reapportioning that piece of property off. And I wasn't getting a direct answer from the superintendent. And I get it. She's busy. There was elections, you know, I have no hard feelings. But now that I know that there is an interest, then we will be pursuing, if there is an interest by this board, we'll pursue a proposal for that northern piece of property.
So you've talked to her within the last two weeks, you said?
Yes.
I mean, is there any dollar amounts being thrown around, or?
No, they want one from us, which I can't give, you know.
I can tell you what the prior city manager was going to do. I can tell you that later.
Okay, and then as far as the bathrooms being vandalized, I know like a really good deterrent could just be a simple sign that says the property's under video surveillance, you know, even if at this point...
We did that down at the beach, and it made a huge difference.
Okay, cool. Yeah, so yeah, sometimes it's just as easy as that.
Yep.
And then regarding the mess with UHY, you said the attorney is looking into it. Can you kind of expand on that?
I don't want to get into a ton of the details right now because all of the information has not had, been reviewed by everybody. If it is an agenda item at a future meeting, we can get into the nuts and bolts of it, but I will say that there's a little bit of concern over the cost and the quality of what we've received. So I have had preliminary conversations with the attorney to look into things for me and see if there is any potential reimbursement or repercussions for what happened. And I don't know what has come of that yet, but we will find out.
Okay, so will that be on the agenda for the next meeting, or?
I don't know. It kind of depends on what he finds out in his conversations.
Seems like, seems like if you read some of the auditor's comments, that some balls were dropped, and yet, when you look at the invoices...
We got charged for the balls.
Some of the balls were charged. So we're going to look into revisiting with you, with the management over there, not necessarily the person who was doing the work, and see if there can be an invoice adjustment.
Okay. And then going forward, you know, now that UHY is not working for us anymore, can you speak to, as like, your confidence going forward as far as reconciling these accounts and your confidence in the treasurer?
I have full confidence in our treasurer. She is a true accountant. She comes from corporate accounting, so she has had to learn a little bit of the municipal side of things. But if anything, it's only made her more thorough, in my opinion. It's only made her more critical of our books, and I have full confidence in her. And so do our auditors. In conversations with McBride and Manley, they're thrilled at her ability. They speak the speak, and it's, I think it's a very, very good thing.
So at this time, we're still trying to figure out where those accounts are at, or, you know, where the ledgers are? Are we aware?
I think we're aware of where everything is. I think it's just going back and maybe if, I mean, we know how much money is everywhere. It's not a matter of that. It's just, was certain, and this is accounting, there were certain journal entries posted on the proper date, where they rolled into the proper month. Are the balance sheets accurate because was everything accounted for? Are all the transfers there, and if not, why? Was one missed? You know, they're digging into the pension formulas and everything else to go forward with the audit, and so a lot of the things are popping up that you may not see in a day-to-day. You see when you're digging into the dirty details, so I have full confidence in her.
Okay, because yeah, the reason I ask that, because I tallied up all the hours that UHY trained her, and it was about 60 total, and I guess that's a little concerning to me, but you know...
And like, enough or not enough?
I don't feel 60 is adequate for a person that didn't have any municipal experience.
She was a corporate accountant though, so I can, like I said, I can attest to, she is, since I've been here, she's the first accountant that's been in that office, like true accountant who knows the numbers inside and out. And I mean, the other thing is, to be honest, we were trying to get UHY out in the respect that we knew we were paying a lot of money for them, and once we had a professional qualified to do the job in the seat, we didn't want to be paying two people to do one job. And so we put a benchmark of being done at the end of September. Our treasurer felt confident that she knew what she was doing to have them out at the end of September, and with the partnership with McBride and Manley, she, there was a resource there. One of the former treasurers, Mary Ellen, has always allowed us to use her as a resource if we need, and so we've, honestly, we've been doing fine since UHY's been out.
Okay. Yeah, I just know, you know, I've had a lot of different positions in the past, and you know, 60 hours, that's about a week and a half of training, you know, it's really not very much.
It's not a ton, but she has proven that she, there was a lot of it she didn't need.
Yeah, I mean, if you say that Curtis McBride is full confidence in her, then that's, yeah, that's great. Okay.
Give him a call. He was very nice.
Yeah, I think I am going to.
It was on the second page. I don't know if anybody else called him.
I did.
You sent an email for the UHY with invoice, and it said an agreement, but I got a proposal. I didn't get any agreement.
There was two, there was two attachments, the agreement and the invoices. There was two attachments.
This is a proposal, not an agreement.
Well, that's what the board voted on, so that's what we had.
So you didn't have a signed agreement?
There is a signed agreement. There is a one-sheet page that I have that is there, so. Then I sent you the wrong thing.
That's what I was asking.
I wasn't even going to send that because it wasn't what was asked for. I was just sending the invoices, and I attached that to go with it for more information for the newbies.
That's all.
Anything else? Okay, moving on to Commissioner Privilege and Liaison Report, then let's start with Commissioner Clausen.
The Planning Commission, there's two large projects that are going on. The old, I guess everywhere we know is the, the old Pacalite Building. They want to revise that and they want to put an addition on. And they brought in friends and drawings and we reviewed that, so. The only question that they had at that meeting was hard surface parking where there's already gravel like that lumberjack and across the street. And the city manager said that our building inspector was working on that, that they only had one year of gravel and then they had a hard pavement. Just, we worked on that. And then, there's another company that's looking at large acreage. The one he's showing us is 108 units. It's down by the, the old Plaza, the Kmart Plaza. And they just have to work out some figures and come back. As if the figures are too, too bad or too high, then it was just a, we're interested, but we haven't confirmed it yet. So, that was, that was it. And the only other thing I, I noticed was we just did, we just capped that Metropolis and where Fourth Street comes in, I think it is, the manhole is in love with the street surface. So, I don't know why they didn't correct that, but yeah. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Bryson?
I have nothing tonight.
Commissioner Helfer?
Start off and just say how awesome it is to be on this board and just thank everybody here for the privilege to serve with you and thank everybody that voted for me. I'm just really, really, really excited for just the future of this city. It's super optimistic. On the other side of that is, you know, these meetings for quite a while now have had a very combative tone. To the point where I've heard that people actually have watch parties and have drinks while they're watching these meetings and laughing at us up here. And that to me is, is very unfortunate. And I think everybody on this board and, and, and the appointed boards, everybody involved in this government should be doing everything in their power just to be professional up here. Just to kind of restore some respect back to this council. Because a lot of it was lost through, you know, trying to get rid of Commissioner Hendrick and that whole fiasco. And, you know, we, we don't have to like each other, we really don't. But what we do have to do is get along and, and just, like I said, be professional. Because the last thing we want to do is just produce more black eyes for this city. So, I would just really hope that moving forward, we can reduce the rhetoric of insults and, and everything like that and just, just try to get along and be pros up here. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross?
All right, got a bunch. Number one, congratulations to the Marine City Mariners football team on a great season. Wore my shirt, show everybody, but go Mariners. It was really interesting this year being father of an actual junior, you know, playing on the varsity team the entire year. And it was just the football families, the parents of the team, the coaches, the cheerleaders, it's just such a fantastic community to be, be a part of. And there's so many people who do great things there. Number two, the, there's an Old News Boys fundraiser tonight and I just wanted to give a shout out to Murphy's Inn. I know they're in St. Clair, but they did a fundraiser for them and it was very nice of them to do that. My stomach's been growling all night because I had an awesome Reuben. The Santa Parade is November 22nd, that's just next week. For better or for worse, I will be providing the color commentary on Channel 6 along with Paul Dingeman. I've asked for more detail on the tractors this year, so hopefully that'll be a nice thing. The Merry Time Christmas is December 3rd. And then, you know, regarding everything, I think there's still, and I'm the eternal optimist and I apologize for that, but I think there's more that brings us together than separates us. You know, we have the bike path and when, you know, when, when the paper that some people decided that maybe wasn't as important as others, I got a lot of support. I got support from cross-country coaches, from residents saying, oh my God, please, you know, keep the bike path, it's a wonderful thing. So, again, I do think that we, you know, more brings us together than separates us. We all want good things for this city and I hope we can all move forward. The last thing is regarding the safe routes to school. That's been discussed in several meetings as things have progressed. And I wanted to get to the bottom of what happened, you know, what happened to the push buttons on the lights. So, here's what happened. In that timeframe, the local MDOT agency recommended those crossing signals. Also at that timeframe, the jurisdiction of the MDOT branch was, for St. Clair County, was reassigned. And after those lights were installed sadly, MDOT finished testing on them and they failed. So, they said, well, we're not supporting these and went and disabled them. My understanding is, from the person at MDOT that I spoke to, they are working to remedy that and are going to try and replace them with a much better sign that rather than just having a like kind of weak little LED perimeter around the sign, it has a huge flashing bar on top that you cannot miss. They're, you know, they're approved by MDOT, they've been approved and they will, they're looking to get that approved. He said, you know, I can't say that it's approved, but they're looking to get it approved and install them sometime soon. So, I was happy to hear that. The other thing they actually suggested, and Mike left, but there is a way like they do in St. Clair and Port Huron to put right along the two solid yellow lines, a sign that says, there is a crossing here and it is state law that you stop when there's somebody in the crossing. So, it wasn't necessarily that it was too busy a road or anything like that. They're happy to do it and again, wanted to right the wrong that was done previously. So, it took some effort, but I did dig and get to the bottom of it, that's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Henry?
Okay, so, just a little additional. When we did those, the, the problem we were having is when, when somebody would press the button, people would call me and they'd say, well, what are we supposed to do as a car driver? Okay, that was the question. So, then when we went and asked them, what are they supposed to do? That's when they yanked the, but they didn't take them on all the signs. They only took them on the main highway. They left the one over by the bridge, they left the one by the, which they still worked, except the one fell over, over on Ward Street and then it wasn't replaced. So, they only took the ones on there because I asked the question, what is the driver supposed to do when somebody presses the button and, you know? And they said, well, nobody ever asked us that question and therefore we got that letter, which is in some packet somewhere, I, I remember, remember we got that letter? And they said, well, we don't know what to do, we're going to study it and we'll get back to you. So, finally, they're getting back to you.
I mean, I did pry.
Yes, no, it's good. But the one over by the Lions Club, I think what happened to that is, we think, we found it on our camera where it just fell over one day. Well, what happened, we think, is the garbage truck comes in there and we think the garbage truck used the arms and it caught the sign and might have damaged the bottom. And then, one day when the wind blew enough, finally blew it over. But they just yanked it out, all it needs is a new base to put the sign back in. But the kids really used that one a lot to cut across to get over to the bike path. So, those are those two things. Anyway, the only other thing I've got is the Old News Boys will be doing our paper sales, December 2nd and 3rd. It's a Friday, Saturday, dawn to dusk, try to watch out for everybody. They will be out in the streets, but it was very, very good last year. So, hopefully, we have a good year and it's not raining because it's really miserable when you're standing out there for that. And I just want to thank everybody in this community. I still get a lot of people coming up to me, it's, it's great to hear all the support. And I'm glad that hopefully we can all move forward and get going here, so that's all.
Commissioner Mark?
I just wanted to say I'm grateful to everyone who's supported me, put up signs and voted for me. And I will do my best to serve all Marine City, whether you voted for me or not. I want to work for transparency and I want to watch the budget because these are times of inflation and you see the price on the gas signs out there. I also want all procedures and city ordinance should be followed by the commission and the city manager, not just when they're liked. And I noticed some in previous meetings like, well, yes, we should be doing this, but we'll do it from now on and then the next meeting it's broken. So, I'd really like to stop that. And I think we did really well tonight, I think everybody talked and agreed and got on with things. So, I think it's a really good start. And I want all the citizens to feel comfortable coming before the commission and freely express their opinions on their issues without indifference or scorn from some of the members of the board, which was in the past. And I look forward to making Marine City a better place for everyone, thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for their support, support of, of me, the commissioners. I think that we all have, we all have a common goal here in, in this board and that is for better government and to keep our city moving forward. And I think as others have said, that we can agree to disagree when needed and we can get to those common goals to keep our city moving forward. A lot of the other things that I was going to mention tonight, the parade, maritime, Old News Boys, all got mentioned. So, I won't go over that again. And I was going to talk a little bit about myself, but that was covered earlier today in the five minute. So, again, thank you for everyone's support and I'm looking forward to keeping the city moving along in a forward direction.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Meeting's adjourned.